Thank everyone for being here. We will be approving the amendments from March 14th and tonight's meeting at our May 9th meeting. So now we will be addressing the budget amendment question from the previous meeting.
I think you guys have questions on what we were meeting the last time. Again, a couple of lines, one of the chair's budget. Chair is here, we got a lot to speak to him. This concerns some holiday pay and some reasons for violations that he called greatly. Andrew Smith was on this, the sheriff of August, Matt's fiance would have to pray. So if y'all have any questions, clarify.
We have the motion approved, the budget meeting. We're using the various games set by Mr. Karen Higgins. Any more discussion about the budget amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you for all the ones that wrote your comments and your letters to the commissioners. Also for the ones who call, voiced your opinion as good speech points. And moving forward to purchase Regent's Bank Building for the Chester County Library, I would like to have the library commissioner chair, Mr. Russell Clay.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, Mr. Russell, I think they want to, if you don't mind taking that mic there or whatever.
Good evening. As you know, this is a special call meeting. And I can't discuss anything other than the purchase of Regent's Bank for the library. But I will assure you that this has been checked out because all the money that we got in Harper has to meet the guidelines before you can commit to any of it. And they do have the guidelines or meet the guidelines to go through with this. We have had, I've had a lot of questions about all the people that they put in request. I will assure you with all the committees, we are negotiating all of them. We want to try to help everyone that we can. And then I'll go into what the meeting is about tonight. We met as a library, car parking committee that serve interest in this. And if we purchase a roof with this, the Regent's Bank, this will open up for some of the other moves that we feel are very necessary. And all the moves that we're thinking right now on the top of the list is to help our young kids. I think that we need to really stop and think, but we've had a lot of negative and a lot of positive about this. But we need to try to help our kids. And this would be one way. And if you're waiting to build a building, we're talking roughly two years. And hopefully you get it in that timeframe with the way materials are and the way the contractors are. But what we're asking you tonight, commissioners, is we like intent to purchase the previously known Regent's Bank for sole purpose used for the Chester County Library. And the committee approved 675,000. Let me explain a little bit. The bank is asking 750,000, but there's 63,000 that is needed for the roof repair. And then there is money that needs to move the teller station. So we are asking that we propose a letter of intent offering 675,000. If it's accepted by the Regent's Bank, the county and the library have 60 days minimum to obtain quotes, to do measurement and detailed inspection to see if this will fit and without any additional money. In addition, unknown repairs will be deemed needed at unattainable or other issues arrived. Okay, now whenever we do a letter of intent, we've got to submit 1% of what we're asking, which is going to be $6700. Okay, during this 60 days, if we discover anything for reading for us not to purchase it, then we get our $6700 back. If we do purchase it, it goes against the call of the price of the bank. So we're asking the commissioner to give us a deep consideration for support of our children of Chester County.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go forth with the letter of intent for 675,000 to reserve the bank for this little library.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrew Hohn and a second by Commissioner Sandra Myers. Will there be any discussion?
Yes, sir, Reverend. I just want to say, I want to say this. Anybody that votes no, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for everybody up here. Anybody that votes no tonight is being hanged with a white brush. That we're against the library and we're against the kids. That is not true, speaking for me. We have been forced tonight to make a vote to buy the library, to buy the Regent's Bank for the library. I would vote tonight if I had the opportunity to remodel and expand the current building. Just not vote for me tonight. I just simply want to say, for whoever votes no tonight, ask them why they voted no. And I assure you, they will tell you it's not that they are against the library and they are against the children of this county. I give you my 100% commitment. If this vote passes tonight, I'm going to live with it, I'm going to sleep soundly tonight. If it fails tonight, I will be committed to helping the library. And I just want you, I want people to know, this is not a vote against the library or against the children of this county. My vote will be against purchasing another brick and mortar building. And I just want that on the record tonight, because I don't want people to hate me and going out saying that Tim Pro hates the library and Tim Pro hates the children. That is nothing further from the truth. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, this building up there is going to have to have a fire protection system built into it. I've got a quote from Key Fire Protection of what it's going to cost. I've got the quote set down, got it right here next to the car. It's going to cost, uh, glass. All right, it's going to cost $170,784 to put a fire protection in that building. I've got the quote from the day, I've here me as the votes look at it. I've got several copies left. That's going to break, and we can wind up, if we do this, pay the $100,000 for that building to get 700 square feet more. And that's all it is, 700 square feet more than what they got.
Would anyone else like to make a comment?
My biggest concern with a lot of the folks is speed, with which all of sudden trying to move forward right now. We do have the time. And with the feasibility study that we were recent, very recently given, the guy who wrote the feasibility study says we should look into getting the numbers on everything before we start jumping forward and going ahead. And that was provided by the mayor's office just this past week. We got at least a dozen, probably closer to 18 different folks asking, requesting funds. So when we, we don't have a limited, we don't have an unlimited check, we have a limited amount of money. So again, as Tim said, I think when we look at alternatives for what everybody wants, if you have kids, you have to have those conversations about need versus want. And the needs, I think, I think all of our departments, all of our officials do a good job of providing the needs. What they like more, of course they do. And do we want to support as much as we can, especially our children? But that's not just the only way we can support our children. And there's other things that the library does also, not just for the children. A lot of stuff for a lot of adults and other folks in that county who need some help. But there's a lot of different entities that do that. And so again, my recommendation has always been let's get those numbers. Many did the physical ability study, but said this is incomplete, it really doesn't do you much good. I'm starting to remember, but until you put dollar figures to all these things, you're kind of, you know, it's a, it would be like if you had something coming to put a roof on your house and then a month later, asking them how much it costs. It's just, we need to be a little more prudent with our distribution of funds. And again, the only reason you want to push us through is because of, I don't know, someone's got an agenda for expediency. It just makes sense to get the numbers first. Don't get the cart before the horse. And we're the same, waste makes waste, we do need to die to the waste tax every month. It needs to be done prudently, with a plan, an overall plan. This is just one committee. We've got all those other committees with, again, over a dozen, probably even like I said, 18 different folks that certainly can use the money. And it's, it's a challenge for us. I'll be the first one to sit here and tell everybody, yeah, we're going to be challenged by this. And we're going to get contentious at times, but we're going to have to stuff it up and go on. Because that's our gotten, took this community out, we were discussing stuff, specifically maturely and less. But like Congress, back in the day, we'd get dollar figures before we start dedicating money. Because I don't want to be the one, after you get rid of the money, to have six other people still in line. Do you want to be the one to tell Dick Stevesfield, sorry, ran out of money? You want to tell T-Cat, not going to be able to add anything else to it. You want to tell Solid Waste, but their weight, there's defractions and the whole expansion act, sorry, ran out of money. So Larry can buy a bike, but he can't buy any cars, so maybe he can be in trouble, I don't know. These are the decisions we have to make. But we need numbers to do it. We don't need to push this through quickly just because we want to check the market that says, look what we did. First of all, that's disingenuous as it is, because the only reason we got this money is because of a lot of suffering that a lot of people dealt with. And that makes it doubly more important for us to do diligence and do this right, because it's very important. We want to help all people. I hope y'all understand that. But you understand, there's a competition for this money. But that's our job to go through it and actually do this. And again, we've had lots of conversations. Very often I ask you personally, where do you stand on this? I want to make sure that people know where you stand on this. Do you want to hide that break and more ability with that much going on, if you got a Christmas party, to have another building on by the county? Regardless of what other assets we have, another building, I want to, I would like to know where you stand on it.
Well, I personally think this would be an excellent idea. I think it would be a great showcase for the county, for people coming into our county from north to here. I think it would be a great representation of the county for that to be the library. The library is not just for kids. I know we do say a lot, the library is for children, but our library is for everyone. I don't know if anyone's been out there lately. There is all ages out there at the library. There's you, I mean, even one in two year olds and their young parents. They're, they're, they enjoy the library a lot. It uses for computer means. Well, Ms. Savannah, you just dealt with all the uses of the library. I, I've been out there a couple of times. I hate to say years ago, I wasn't out there much, but I've heard so much about it. And she talked about the traffic jam in the library. It's not just the same ones all the time, like people are saying. It's different ones all the time. And it can be used, it can be a great asset for the county. Especially for all the different rooms in the area there is up there. I believe it's a great asset.
Would you please, Commissioner, for including the position, adding all the people you said need funds?
Yes, I would. So you should have your back, if there is a grant proposal that we created back in March, and then it does say 4,995 square feet. I've had people approach me recently asking where I got that number. That number has been on our reports that are reported to the state library system for about two years. If anyone needs confirmation of that, I have documents here tonight to do proof that that is the reports we have. That's the knowledge we have. So 4,995 square feet is the current building's worth of footage that I have. Now, the actual part that we can utilize for patrons, for our computer usage, technology trainings, programs, anything like that is between 3,200 square feet and 33,000. The rest of the building is a storage space area, large bathroom to the public, and a test environment, small conference room. We cannot house most of our programs in that conference room anymore. So now we're paying programs in the main part of the library, which then takes away from other patron experiences. You may have someone that comes in, they are sensitive to sounds and things. If you have a program of children and you cannot have it separated from the main library, we are no longer adequate to meet in the weeds of those patrons. Other services we do offer, we have books, we have PDBs, we have audio books, yes. But we also have copy and services. Just last month, we helped with 947 copies. We also helped with 32 faxes. Those copies and faxes are things from time cards, disability, workers' comp, unemployment, medical forms, anything like that. With the faxes, most of the time it's time cards. Someone cannot get paid unless they have the ability to fax those, and we are offering that service. Last month, on average, we are doing 19 tech trainings that last over 15 minutes. Some of these last 15 minutes, some of these have lasted an hour. And we do not charge patrons for this. They come in, they need help, we help them as long as we're able to without violating the security. Under 15 minutes, we helped 115 people. This range for showing them how to save pictures on their phone with their grandparents. It ranges to showing them how to take a picture of the document, send it to an printer, to then have a job application on their phone. There is no else around here that does this. We are the only ones that are offering that service and for free. The programs are another thing we have. Weekly at storytime, we have at least 30 kids. This morning, we had 40, not really the adults. We have teen programs, adult programs, and senior programs. Every single one of our programs is free. The way I afford these programs is I try to get every grant that I possibly can so that there's no money coming to the county for these. Just in 2020, I had gotten $38,000 in grants, and that was July 2020. That is up in the past years. That is what I try to do, so we can offer our system the best. I may not be elected here, I'm a public servant, just as you are. We also offer meeting space. We have had several routes that have had to leave us, homeschooling to room groups, because they do not have the space to meet in our rooms anymore. So we are now not serving portions of our community because we are too small. We also have increased needs since COVID for independent testing, study areas, and meeting areas. People come to us to meet with their lawyers virtually, their doctors virtually, to do a job interview. We have caseworkers that try to come, but we have one conference room. If it's in use, no one else can use it. If the library's occupying it, nobody else can use it. We desperately need more space, specifically small areas to accommodate these people. And this is a service that became necessary since COVID and is not going away. It was also a problem with our books. We have a section right now that I cannot work anymore books in. I literally have no room to put another shelf for it. I've added every which way, turn of which way, I cannot add anymore. And it is one of our top checked out sections. So we're starting to get into another point where I'm disservice in this community because I don't have what I need to do my job for the citizens. It has been mentioned, expand the building. We have discussed that, yes, that is an option. However, there are things that you don't see. Because of where the building is built, there is a severe humidity problem. For most people, that's not going to be an issue, but we are literally a building full of books. Humidity with books leads to moisture on the books. Moisture on the books leads to book mold, that is spread from book to book. So then I am stuck pulling perfectly good books that have book mold that wants to destroy our collection, out of the collection, getting rid of them and having to spend more money to replace those books because our community is using them. We have 60 humid advisors in the library, six. We can deal them two to three times a decade. Even with an expansion, you add a commercial humidity bar on the unit, I was told that it is most likely not going to take away all of that humidity problem. That is a huge problem for us. There's also the fact that with an expansion, once we expand, there's no other way we can go. We are stuck right there. There's also the fact that that's going to take away from some of our parking areas. And there are things that we do need that because of the current layout of the building, we will not be able to achieve. So there are some things that will be lost. I know some of you feel personally that this has been moved on too quickly, but I will say that since 2012, this meeting, Canada, has come to y'all countless times, expressed how that we need more space. This is not a new problem. This has been going on for years. We've just been applying documentation for years. Every county commission meeting, I come to you, I tell you what we're doing, I show you that we're growing. We're not going to stop growing. And if you want the needs of the community, then we need to help the library. With the Regent's building, yes, it is not as new square footage as expanding on the library. However, their setup there is different and it works for us. Those offices are very valuable and that can be used for the individual study areas, and they're already in existence, they're created where they are. There's room for our Tennessee Room Collection. There's room for the two staff members that need an office to have an office. There is a drive-through area. COVID hit, we started doing curbside. That is something that our patrons still want, especially the elderly and the young people that have children, lots of small children, that they don't want to drag out in the park just a two-minute trip. Right now, if we offer the curbside, and we do still do it, we have to completely unman the desk, go outside. So there should no one at the desk to help anyone in the library. Anyone could go really wherever they wanted, to be honest. With the Regent's Bank Building, it does come with a drive-through. There is a drawer, and we are able to fit books, hotspots, and different items like that in there. We can offer our curbside services that way. For the chutes, there are also possibilities of doing the faxes, printing, copying, anything like that for a side. I know it was mentioned price for fire. I would like to point out that if we're being completely honest, the library just had a sprinkler system installed one month ago. So that expense is going to be something either way. And with the expansion, it'll have to be installed in the expansion part as well. Part of the letter of intent is to give us an opportunity before committing to do more due diligence, to do the research we need to make sure that this truly is good space for the library, like we believe it is. We took measurements, and that's how we come to this decision. It gives us a chance to get quotes for any repairs that need to be made. Remodeling inside for us is very minimal, but it allows us to get quotes for that. And it allows us to get the chance to inspect and see if there's anything that we don't see on the front end. A letter of intent just allows us to hold this building so that we can do this, and then we have the option of purchase.
Savannah, you have got 4,000 rungs. That's a high volume, one of the high ones here in the county that we're doing service. I also had questions from the people here and others that said, well, if we get the internet services, it would go down. Explain that.
So it's, we did see a decrease in the middle of COVID from now, but it was not a huge decrease. We are still seeing very steady numbers in our technology usage, our hotspot usage. For anyone who doesn't know the hotspot, it's a small device they can take to their home, which we offer this for free, and it gives them internet at their home. Many of the people, and I have personally asked them, many of the people that are on our hotspot list that use our computers, they currently have access to the library. They cannot afford it. That problem is not going to go away. If they can't afford it, they can't afford it, and that's why they're coming to us.
Russell, can you address the cost it would be to expand? Will the cost exceed what we would pay for this building?
Okay, we got a quote of 835,000, I believe, to do an addition to the library. And like you said, it's going to cramp them up pretty good out there because it gets to all of the west side of that bit of earth space there. And then, I don't know if everything was included, like you mentioned fire and what have you, I didn't see the planning. But you're talking now roughly another $1 million versus $1 million for the Regent's Bank. Which is already efficient, which that we can make some of these moves, to help some of these kids, to feed them supper. And you know, if we want to put it off and make them suffer another two or three, four years, we're not this kind of people. I know none of you want that. I know none of the fixtures want this. Oh, I got somebody else who I don't want to speak, Patricia, do you want to talk?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and all the commissioners talking to you to serve on this library and Hall purpose board. I think the first clarification that I want to say tonight is tonight's meeting is not to purchase the Regent's Bank. That is not our objective. The purpose for tonight is to give us what she, Savannah just said, we are just asking for 60 days. So I think as individuals and business owners, that if you had an opportunity to have time, Joe, everything you said, 100% agree with it. Everyone in this room has an opportunity to come before this commission and ask for the dollars that are within the guidelines for COVID. The library was highly impacted by COVID. Hall purpose center was devastated by COVID. Our families were devastated by COVID, that our center serves. Kirby can speak to you about how quick our numbers went up once COVID was decided and our school systems opened back up. How I'd say as a child about six months to build relationship with their teacher enough to tell them the worst secret of their life. But tonight, I'm here to talk about the Hall Purpose Center and want me to. It is the Hall Park worthy most definitely. And if you go out there to those fields and see how many kids are playing on them and the families and all that, it's, it's needed. The Hall Purpose Center serves 200 children. That's not counting family members, that's not counting grandma, grandma, parents, and all those families. So we can't, we can't bring our children, one of you, we have to see them. I love them. I've never met any of them, but I do know we serve them and we serve the families. And, but tonight, I think we really want to focus on, is this building worthy of the amount of money we're talking about? And Savannah's a great presentation, also made the suggestion. And so I don't want us to get confused with, we're voting tonight to ask you for sixty days. We're not voting tonight to ask you to vote five days. That's not, that's not the question. We're asking for sixty days. In that sixty days, Joe mentioned that this building is set up. In that sixty days, that gives hopefully every community that has been assigned to come for you and say, here is what our need is, and for them to give you the accountability and the responsibility, then it will pass COVID off. The audit will come. And for every dollar we spend, whether it's capital projects or whatever, everything we spend will have to be accountable, or you will have to reach back into the taxpayers' dollar pockets, see if the dollars are paying for it. So we're not here to ask for seven hundred fifty thousand, six hundred seventy-five thousand. We're not here to ask for anything tonight, other than when you make a commitment to vote for, you know, sixty days. The sixty days is for Savannah and library team, if they're here with grace before. They're just asking, give us some time to do this. And we're saying, hey, that's a great idea, because it gives each of you sixty days to hear from all of the family, to hear from everyone that's interested and trying to see if they're validated for these funds. I have the ARPA funds and the UNS SLR or something maybe. And when it first came out, it had this really, really strict guidelines. And now it's come out, it's more open. And everybody's like, well, I want to do this and this and this. Yes, you can, but it still has to be tied to COVID because the audit is coming. And for all of you that are business savvy, everyone obviously did some point. So I'm, I'm, I'm just here to clarify what Fisher Clayton has said, what the motion was, what Cassandra made, and Cassandra seconded. That's all the motion is. It's not saying we're going to buy a week's time building, because I think everyone in here deserves the chance and may be your same proposal. And I think I'm repeating myself twice, but I'm very passionate about it.
You're a lot of your up there, I won't make a comment yet. If the Regent's Bank denies our intent letters, then, you know, it's, we, it's over or we got to back up and come again. I don't know. This is what the committee recommended to offer them, to get the letter of intent in, to get those sixty days, that we can finalize some of our questions.
And those guidelines came from Ashley Walker. She is the broker for Regent's Bank. She has been down ILO three times to shut the building. So those are the guidelines. And we're not asking you to vote to save buying the Regent's Bank building. But that's not it at all tonight, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we had to come back to sixty days to vote again?
Oh.
No, I wouldn't mind voting over a report tonight, but I don't know if I think sixty days is that.
Oh. I guess it all depends, you say, check it. And if we find anything different, there's going to be a cost. I think it's way that have to get you out of here.
Yes.
What was the motion?
You're contradicting yourself there. You're saying, if you're asking if we have to move back to vote again, and you're saying that, yes, vote tonight means you're approving the purchase of the Regent's Bank. If the office accepted, that's a weak spot.
We are wanting to vote to put in a letter of intent with the one percent earnest money to where we can check the building out. And if it meets all the guidelines that we need and that we can, and would satisfy for the library, we would still, I continue to purchase. But we, that would be sixty days, and we would need to come and vote on it again before that sixty days would be passed, because if you go over, it could lose the one percent. We would need, we would need to vote on it before the sixty days. And Mr. President, Mr. Martin?
With the commission takes, you don't vote to approve the letter of intent. You don't approve the purchase, it would require another vote. If you vote to approve the letter of intent and contract consistently, it would not require another vote.
So what's the motion? So what's the motion?
The motion was that that way would approve the proceeding with purchasing with an intent letter and approve for our day and the library. So what's the, how, how?
You heard the motion, what's your opinion, what's your legal thinking about that? But again, the library is your broker. If, if it meets our needs and the library needs, then it's a done deal. You're saying, the way you also reported that, you're saying it meets the, it's up to.
Let's do make a clarification on our motion.
I think we have a pretty different motion.
Here's the way I got it written. Now, this is within the next year we got to write, but here's what it said. Motion to move forward with the purchase of the former Regent's Bank building for the library use and offering a letter of intent for six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for seeking that here with one percent earnest money.
That's what I meant. That would be the motion, and we have a second to that motion.
Okay, you put up earnest money and you don't have to follow triple buying dividend. You do not get that earnest money back.
We just know that we would if it was within the sixty days.
Yes, we got to hear the case. I suppose to the realtor mindset, if we do written notice within the sixty days, ask for our earnest money back and advise them of why. It doesn't matter why, as long as we advise them why, we get everybody our earnest money back.
On the agenda that we have tonight, it says plainly, moving forward for purchase Regent's Bank building for Chester County Library. That's all it says.
I did not make that, but the motion is in place for this for specifically an intent to purchase.
Talking about this building.
Something far is happening right now. There are.
Everybody in the county was, something to say about buying this building, and we've been talking about it for years, and we still haven't got a vote on it.
We're not verified on this question. It is a verified motion. It's not your first.
Clarify the motion, and this, this will be it, just exactly.
Okay, ready? Go ahead. Okay. The committee is praying before the committee to move forward with a letter of intent for purchase of previously known Regent's Bank building for the sole purpose of the Chester County Library of six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars with a letter of intent. If accepted by Regent's Bank, the county library would have sixty days minimum to obtain a vote, like very much detailed inspection and all that for the repairs. And then if we're within the sixty days and we find that we can't purchase it because of needing more, our money would want to play it with a refund.
So you're putting a ten second, you're not saying.
There is one phrase that was learned out, if you don't mind. If any additional under repairs are deemed needed and overdue or other issues arise, with written notice, the county will leave the negotiation to be returned the earnest money paid once it's been authorized. This will be given us sixty days to check it out, see if it fits the needs, see if there are any extra things that need to be done to that building. If not to purchase, it is a letter of intent.
Which is, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure that's what the motion. The motion is what matters. And what I'm asking, we can get a clarification or a amendment to the motion. I can't do it. Where's the main motion at? That it's clear that we're just simply misunderstanding. If we vote yes tonight, all we'll do is give a letter of intent, authorize one percent for all this to go forward and be checked out. If within the sixty days, we find it's okay, it comes back here for the commission, the full commission to decide if it's appropriate for a second vote. Is that the answer? Are you willing to make that in your motion? That they're done, we're going to come back and it be approved towards everybody gets to hear what all the issues are or not, and then we get to approve it or not within sixty days?
Okay, now, a lot of them said that we've done the purchase with this hoping that we wouldn't have to come back. Now listen, I'll read it slow. The county commission to move forward with a letter of intent to purchase the previously known Regent's Bank for the sole purpose of the Chester County Library in that way with a letter of intent, if accepted by Regent's, the county library would have sixty days to obtain the quote, the measure, and the detailed changes. And if any additional cost or leave of care or anything that we didn't think that we could have to pay, we would get our one percent cost of purchase returned. And that's what I'm saying.
That's my question, that is, who decides? Who decides? The full commission, the mayor, the committee? Do you say about these contingencies, who decides if it's good or bad?
We do have a library that everyone knows for. They have several years over this building expansion that I think all that is related to what we should talk about.
We, listen. The motion stated. The motion stated that we get a letter of intent, we have the one percent down, and within the sixty days, if all doesn't, we will come back together and make a decision whether we continue with the purchase or ask for our one percent back. Is that good for the man's?
This is what I said.
All the questions.
I've got to say something first. This is what I said. It's not what I said. I'm the office side, and the motion that I made was after Mr. Clayton said what he said, that everybody heard. Everybody heard exactly what he said. This is what I said. I make a motion to move forward with the letter of intent for six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to reserve the bank building with that letter of intent for the library. That's what I'm saying.
Can I have a brief?
I've got it.
Can I be served, maybe, too? For the library places. All right. The seven hundred square feet is going to solve all your problems, right?
From what we can see, based on the measurements we took looking at the space, yes.
You're not going to come back next year and count this? You're asking for eight thousand square foot.
I'm not. In this package, I'm not coming to you in here asking for more. That is not something I would do.
This is a feasibility.
You have all been told.
That's what they recommend. Honestly, the feasibility, if I read it right, really recommends that we have even more space than what we have the option to get because of the consolidation thing on purpose. Where are you going to put us now? And what costs? That would cost. And also, you see that it gives us the time to verify the measurements we took that day, verify with someone that could be a professional, that can sit there and say what we did. We did a chart of the exact dimensions of every shelf, every table, the same width in between everything, and we still had space. This gives us the time to get that confirmed by a professional. We cannot do that if we do not own the building. We cannot own the building without our intent.
Okay. You told me you just have points inside. Right? Okay. Anybody know what that's going to cost? No?
Which is again, what we need, the time, the letter of intent to do. You're not allowing the building to get those costs unless you do a letter of intent and accept it.
So, in other words, the mayor and a few more on here is going to give a million dollars, that's what it's going to cost, or more, down to get far techs and everything, with this building out here, get seven hundred more square feet.
You're not.
That would not make any sense to me, and I want to thank those anybody here, thank you, Matt.
I'm sorry, but you're not seeing the whole picture. You're only a square foot. You're not seeing the services we gain, the outdoor space that we gain for our programs, the storage space, the office space, the conference room space we gain, the independent study areas we gain. You're not seeing that part of it. It may look like that little nice square feet to you, but because of the layout, you can achieve more than our current layout can achieve. And with an extension, there will be certain things that we might be able to achieve, you know, with an extension.
All right, thank you everyone for their comments.
Can I say something?
This is very free, this is being the only one.
Okay.
What this is doing is, y'all know, this thing here that we thought was getting for nothing, we're going to get all this money, it's something going to be given to us, so we took advantage of it. What it's doing is dividing this whole county, dividing this county like the Mississippi Coast here.
That's what I told you last night, said we should just give it back.
Well, what are you saying? You want me to?
No, I just, I would just agree with what you're saying, because if it wasn't for this. I agree with the library thing.
Now, we have let this thing, it's something, like I said, we'd been better off tonight if we not, not even gotten this money. I mean, you see what it's caused everywhere in the county. I mean, it's, it's divided, where there's eighteen of you commissioners. And I know if you go to vote, it's going to be half and half, or maybe it might be a tie or whatever. But it's hard for the citizens of Chester County to realize, they don't know if they're making it. If anything is divided, I don't think you should decide on anything right now till you can get something. It's too much division to vote on something this important. And I don't vote it's important about it, but what's the most important thing is, it is tearing this county, it's just letting Washington D.C. just trickle down to Chester County. And that is hurting us. We'd been better off if there never been any golden money out there. It would've been better off. And now as far as the libraries, I don't think anybody, if we didn't have a library in Chester County, and we're looking for locations to build a library, I don't think anybody would be interested in building a library where your band moved it, that's right. Now, I was out there this afternoon, that's a beautiful building, beautiful. Left there, look at it, it's beautiful, it's a peaceful, restful, it's a nice area. I don't think you'll ever get this building out there to looking like a library. I don't think you'll ever do it. I mean, the asset we got is the location that you got the library. I mean, that's the asset. I mean, it's right there by the, by the schools. I was out there tonight, they're playing ball, they're, it just looks like a, it's a village. Some famous woman said it takes a village, but I'm certainly not agreeing with her. This is perfect for this. Anyway, I just don't see, I'm not against buying the bank building, but to move the library out there, to me, is, is just, the best asset you've got is in my pocket like that for a library. Now, sometimes there's an old saying that it's better to be quiet and have everybody there. It's better to be quiet and wonder than to speak and have everybody else wonder. You help them wonder, but. I appreciate it.
We have to ask, I want to get a clarification. I want to know absolutely, sir, if it has to come from a motion. And clarify, if we vote yes, that it will return back here for us to have a final vote and decision as to whether or not to go forward. After this and all the.
If I didn't say it that way, and I remember exactly what I said, but I was trying to remember exactly what he was saying, and if anybody is going to remember word for word what was said in a quote, we'd. was said in a quote, good for you. But, um, yes, I would think, I need to amend that.
I want to make sure, I want to hear the lawyer say, that brings it back here. That clears up, then really vote to move forward, look at it, study it, and figure out, that's all it is. And then we all, because it's what he said is a fact of the law. But there ain't a soul here that I love and I hear and watch him. And Patricia, I do know, okay? Seen that, and that center...
But that's not what we're voting on. We're voting on the library. We're not even voting the legislature, we're voting on the library.
For a library. For a library.
For a library. That's not what we're voting on.
I want to make sure as if we can find a fact, because what I want to know is, one, if somebody's hurt, that we... I want to say, these ladies, there's a lot of library workers. You tell me it's going to be it, y'all think it's going to be you. You tell me it's going to be, I'm going on that, but I ain't going to that question. I don't question, when I came up here, I don't question the sheriff by his heart. I don't question the trustee or the, yeah, we put those people down, get meddling and all their stuff, but I still trust her today. We don't think she knows what to do, I'll find somebody else. And I'm not saying, all right? That's true. So I don't need to know that until you say it worked, I make the work. But what I want most of all is when we get through, in this process, the $3.4 million that we should have never been sent to us personally because you're making heavily frank, I ain't questioning, but that's a done deal, we didn't decide. But we can work through this in such a way that we build, most of our votes, Tim and I here, we're trying to say, you're right, and I know you're, I ain't questioning anything about that, all right? I'd like for us as much as possible to, when these votes go forward, they're like most of them, 18 out of 18. And that's why, and we may not get there, but we can at least get it. Give it a good shot. This community works together, and there's no reason, but if I, I grew middle of the way to hand, all right? So if it's, if that's clear that we're just voting to move forward to do, consider, put the letter in, and then you come back and find out, they might tell you, no, I ain't interested, we won't sell that, and it's all settled. And no, I have to vote then. That clear that we're ready to back? Is that the motion?
Andrea has amended their motion and will have to get acceptance from Ms. Sandra there. I'm going to read this again, hopefully this will satisfy all parties.
Well, let me say one thing before we do that. I want to make it clear, I'm not to risk that, I thought this was all about the library tonight. The comments I made had nothing to do with the Call Perkins Center. I'm impressed with Call Perkins Center, as anybody in here have donated very little to the Call Perkins Center, and I thought it was all about libraries, but if anyone, if my comments meant I was against the Call Perkins Center, I am not. I want to see them get wherever they want to go and then do something and improve. So I want to figure out when we, that I'm against that.
Let's read them.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
All right, Andrea made the motion to go forward with a letter of intent for 675,000 dollars to preserve the bank buildings for library use for a 60-day period with 1% earnest money down, and she amended it to include a final vote by the county commission within 60 days if the offer is accepted.
That is correct.
That's good.
I saw it.
We have a motion on that, and Ms. Sandra, you should go say it in the motion?
Yes.
Hopefully, there is no more discussion about it since this is the clarity. Can we take a roll of the vote, please?
Johnny Gar.
No.
Jerry Low.
No.
Kevin Faulkner. Al McKinnon.
No.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
No.
Anna Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton. Jerry Emerson.
No.
Sandra Hyers.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
No.
Barry Smith.
No.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
I want to make a statement that I'm on the library board, and I think it's a conflict and we should make votes, so I want to add some...
Jerry Bell.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
No.
He ain't calling me. I already gave my... You want my vote?
Tim Pro. I would.
It's nine to eight. Four, nine to eight. Nine to eight. Five to eight. I'll tell you what, this is, let's do that. I messed up, let's do that.
It's all right, sir.
All right, Johnny Gar.
No.
Jerry Low.
No.
Kevin Faulkner.
No.
Al McKinnon.
No.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
No.
Anna Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton, yeah. Jerry Emerson.
No.
Sandra Hyers.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
No.
Barry Smith.
No.
There he is. Tim Pro.
No.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. Okay, Jerry Bell.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
No.
Now you got answer. Motion failed.
Motion did not pass, will not be moved forward.
Are they voting to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn in six.
I say.